I've got to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute.
To the flag, United States of America. To the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now can we have roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Present.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. Do we have any late changes to the agenda? Okay, thank you.
No, no late changes. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay, so next is public comment. Do we have any? Anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, first we have Ann Bjordanstad. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Right at that podium over there.
Thank you this evening for listening to my comments. I'm here to discuss a chronic, ongoing issue with littering at the location of 230th and 61st Avenue West on the east side of the overpass, just on the little area that you see, the little greenbelt area that's right there, probably about maybe 100 feet. I brought evidence of what we see on a weekly basis of little mini wine bottles, and now it's progressed to very large beer cans, that are deliberately being put there every single week, that has been ongoing for the last probably two-plus years. I want to commend the city utilities and services, individuals in the parks, people, because this has been something that they've been aware of. They do occasionally come and pick it up. Whenever they have to mow the area, they have to clean up. If myself or another person who is also a Mount Lake Terrace, Kathy Tura, she and I work diligently to try to keep these areas clean. We have requested that no littering signs be put up, which they were actually put up, and we do appreciate the city moving forward with that. And not unsurprisingly, it actually created a bigger problem, because now it's very much defiant that it's being spread out. So what we're actually asking, what we're asking, is that these people be held accountable, whomever that may be, that these people who are creating this very unpleasant situation, dangerous and environmentally unsafe, that this be addressed and these people be held accountable. And the way we would appreciate that being done is by some type of surveillance being done in that area, whether that be by video or by patrol, to actually identify and hopefully bring in these people, whomever they may be, to hold them accountable. And I would respectfully ask you to consider, if this was your neighborhood, if this was your street, that all of that was being dumped in every single week.
Every day.
Yeah.
Day.
Every day, but we do see this. But the point is, is that if this was in your neighborhood, would you let this go on for this long without holding whomever it is that's doing it accountable? And that's what we're asking for. Thank you. Not to mention, this goes in my garbage. I have to pay for this to be thrown away. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Tura. I've lived in the same house for 47 years. Thank you. Ann's much kinder than I am. I'm not as pleasant. I get very angry, and I walk the neighborhood. Everybody knows me as the litter bitch of Terrace, and I'm proud to have that honor. Thank you. Yeah, this situation on 230th, it continues to, it's blatant. It's obviously the same set of people, because it's the same kind of containers. I was just in Edmunds, and I just drove up the hill coming back. I saw the little postcard-size no littering sign. Come on, that's not going to do any work. That's not going to do anything. I'm in agreement with Ann. We need some kind of surveillance. We need to stop these people. They're obviously young people that have no regard and don't care, and they need to be made accountable, because I'm tired of cleaning up. I'm not their maid. I don't want to be their maid. You know, I walk up and down the, I clean up on the street. I just try to make our little city cleaner and tidier on a regular basis. So I think we need some surveillance. We need to address it. It's a serious matter. It's disregard. It's rude. It's childish, and they have no manners. It's criminal. It's criminal. Needs to be addressed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. If you haven't signed in on our sheet, okay, great, thank you. Are there any others that I signed up?
No one else has signed up, and no one has registered online to speak, and there were no written comments.
All right, thank you. I hope that the city will get back to you. Okay, so now next is the consent agenda. Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and C.
Second.
Pull off the minutes from the 13th.
So we're going to do the consent agenda without item B?
I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, I'll withdraw and remake my motion to approve the consent agenda items A and C.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So are we going to put B next then? Okay. For B, for, for dash B, for dash A, will be the meeting minutes.
Yeah, we can have a discussion on the meeting minutes from February 13th.
Okay. Councilmember Sonmore, did you have something to say?
Thank you, yes. Item number 11, where we talk about sustainable, long-range sustainability planning, there's only two real sentences in there, and it didn't mention that we're spending $100,000 for somebody outside of our city to look at our budget, which we normally do every single year ourselves, and I'd like to have that added to the minutes, because it's something, minutes are what the city clerk hears, and we did discuss that, and so I'd like that put in there.
Is everyone in agreement with that?
The sentence would say that there's a contract that we're going to look at, that would cost the city $100,000.
It's good.
It'll be as a link on here.
Is there, is there any discussion on that or a motion?
Go ahead, Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the meeting minutes of 2/6/2025 and 2/13/2025 as amended.
Second. Okay, now we can vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is our proclamation for Ramadan, and we'll have Councilmember Steve Woodard read that. Thank you very much for all the guests who are attending tonight. We definitely welcome you.
What an absolute honor. Thank you all for being here. I'm just going to jump right in. City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation, recognizing the commencement of Ramadan in 2025. Whereas Ramadan is a holy month of fasting, spiritual renewal, and a time of reflection for Muslims worldwide in the ninth month of the Islamic calendar year, and whereas Ramadan lasts 29 to 30 days based on the timing of the crescent moon, and whereas Ramadan is regarded as a time for increased awareness and giving the global poor, sick and hungry, and bridging differences between people over a shared commitment of faith, and whereas Mount Lake Terrace Muslims join Muslims across America and around the world fasting each day from break of dawn to sunset, and whereas the daily fasting, excuse me, the daily breaking of fast called iftar at sunset is often celebrated with family and community, and whereas the end of Ramadan is commemorated by the Eid al-Fitr, which translates to Festival of Breaking the Fast, a joyous occasion marked by sharing sweets, gifts, and good tidings, and whereas Ramadan reminds us that Islam has always been a part of America, and Muslims have made extraordinary contributions to our country, and whereas the city of Mount Lake Terrace is home to a thriving Muslim community. Now therefore, our Mayor Yoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, does hereby recognize the upcoming commencement of Ramadan, proclaimed this day by the city council on February 20th, 2025. Thank you all. And we would love to have you come join us, as many of you would like to receive. I believe we have a family that's going to receive the proclamation itself in the city. Would you say the city council as well? Yeah, then you're welcome to have some words.
Hello, everyone. Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. With the name of Allah, the most merciful, the very merciful, may God Almighty be pleased with you and bless you for continued favor and support. It is a matter of pride, and it is a matter of pleasure for us that you invited us, not only for me, but for the entire community of Muslims in Mount Lake Terrace, the entire community of our mosque, Umar Farokh in Mount Lake Terrace. And it reflects the multicultural and multi-ethnic spirit of the great American nation, and we appreciate you, we thank you, and we thank you for everything that you do for us, for the community of Mount Lake Terrace, and for the betterment of the city of Mount Lake Terrace, and for the other, all other communities live in this Mount Lake Terrace. Of course, the month of Ramadan is very special for us, and it is the month, as it is said that, it is the ninth month of our Islamic calendar, and in this month, we fast from dawn to the sunset. And also, it is the month of revelation of the Holy Quran, the final message of God. And also, we pray, and we spend our time in the nights in the prayer, and also we pray in this month. So I pray to God that bless all of us. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. So next is our review, public hearing, and vote on the ordinance amending MTMC 1.15 and 8.15 for code compliance, with our code compliance officer Laura Stevenson and Community and Economic Development Director Kristi Alsworth.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. You may remember, I'm Laura Stevenson, code compliance officer. Tonight, I'm presenting proposed updates to the municipal code that will improve certain sections and ensure more effective and equitable penalty assessments. The proposed revisions have to do with yards, heavy equipment, and commercial vehicles, building and construction materials, backyard camping, penalty caps, and unsafe conditions. Currently, the zoning chapter defines yards, but the nuisance chapter has no definition. By adding a clear definition of yard to the nuisance chapter, we can remove any confusion about enforcement and make sure the rules are consistently applied. For instance, if we use the zoning chapter definition, all of the trash around this house would be considered in an area that is not a yard. We would like that to be changed. This definition will clarify the boundaries where nuisance rules apply, ensuring consistent enforcement, and council's suggested change has been made. Thank you for that. It no longer says anything about parallel lines. Heavy equipment includes things like tractors, backhoes, and even forklifts. We do not have regulations for parking and storage of heavy equipment or a definition of one. We propose adding a definition for heavy equipment and creating specific regulations about where commercial vehicles, such as semis or large dump trucks, and heavy equipment can be parked and stored in residential areas. Are the code sections that would be affected? And these would all be added to the nuisance code as opposed to the zoning code. Right now, our code limits the storage of building materials to ongoing projects. However, there's a loophole built in allowing indefinite storage if someone claims the project is ongoing. To prevent indefinite storage, we propose limiting materials to 90 days unless the project is directly related to a permit. The added language is underlined here. We had a situation come up where a family decided they wanted to camp in their backyard during especially hot weather. A neighbor complained. Our code doesn't allow for residents or their guests to stay in a tent outside overnight. There's no true separation between ongoing homeless encampment and a children's backyard sleepover. In a separate section, our code allows residents to sleep in an RV for up to two weeks out of every six months on their property. We would add specific rules for backyard camping that would be based on the same guidelines we use for RV occupancy. This way, recreational backyard camping stays within reasonable limits but isn't prohibitive. This is a simplified version of what was presented last week. We removed the size limit of the tent and clarified it is for all residential areas, not just single-family residents. Almost all violations are corrected before fees come into play. However, penalties and fees or code violations can accumulate indefinitely. This table shows our code as it relates to violations. These aren't all of our penalties, just the ones that we propose to cap. The code does not distinguish between severity of violation types. Implementing penalty or fee caps would benefit any responsible party as well as the city. It would mean we would have a $10,000 penalty limit on vegetation or vehicle type of nuisance versus a $100,000 limit for commercial property performing an illegal demolition. Because fees can add quickly, there's been hesitation in applying them. They're meant to act as a deterrent, but in some cases, they haven't been enforced. And we're not alone in this. There are other municipalities putting caps on their fees. This is a language we'd like to add. There's an exception if the violation involves unsafe conditions. And this table shows what that will look like. Along with penalty caps, we're proposing a clear definition of unsafe conditions as they relate to penalty caps, in line with the International Building Code. And this language has also been changed. It's been simplified to remove redundancies that may confuse our council's suggestion. This is the first wave of proposed updates to the code related to code compliance. As the code is tested and the city evolves, further refinements will be necessary.
Okay, well, first we can ask if there are any questions. All right. Councilmember Sonmore, did you have questions?
So my first question was, the code already talked about temporary shelter encampments, but it didn't talk about permits for individuals to sleep in a tent on their own property without a permit, and that seemed to be a pretty hot topic on Facebook, or not, but I'm just wondering, is that a big issue?
It's an issue in the sense that our code doesn't allow for anyone to camp in their yards as it stands right now. So this is, this is not to limit people camping. I mean, there are limitations on it, but it's meant to allow for that, so that, while also keeping in mind that it's written from the stance of this is not going to become an encampment issue. That's why there are limitations associated with it, but the code currently doesn't allow for tents to be slept in at all. So we want, just want to be flexible, like allow sleepovers.
Right, and I just, we've had sleepovers for years in our backyards, so I didn't think it was that hot a topic, but it was, never mind. But the question I wanted to ask, with ADUs and a whole bunch of ADUs being added to our properties, especially around light rail, is it still going to be considered one yard? And how are you going to see some infractions? I think the way you wrote it was, it defines yards based on property lines, and that's going to help you determine, because it's set on property lines, that you'll be able to distinguish a little bit better instead of making it per property, and it depends, I guess, who owns the property at the time, but are you going to have to change anything when we allow maybe three to four ADUs on properties?
Perhaps, but hopefully, the way it's written now will be open enough to what's coming down the line.
Yeah, because I like the way you said property lines. So I thought maybe that protected us a little bit on that, and so you're not having to rework everything, because I know that could be a big issue in the future, but other than that, thank you.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Have there been any, anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
No one signed up in person or online.
Okay.
No written testimony.
All right. Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. And now, is there a motion on the table? Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the amendments to MTMC 1.15 and 8.15 for code compliance.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions, questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Laura, and Kristi. Appreciate, appreciate you, I appreciate, I love kind of what you came back with and just appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation about it at our last meeting. You know, again, I think, again, folks enjoy the opportunity to get outside sometimes and appreciate particularly, I know that's an, you know, area where, you know, you recognize that there was, you know, something that was missing in our code and brought it forward, and so appreciate you starting to dig into those things and appreciate the opportunity to ensure that our code really is meeting our residents' needs. So excited to vote to support this and appreciate the collaboration to get to the point where we are, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And if there are no more discussions, we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so next is the review and public hearing for and vote on ordinance re-adopting the code language repealed by ordinance 2864-MTMC 19.125.120, with our, again, oh, this time it's with, with our associate planner, Sarah Pizzo.
Good evening, everyone.
Sarah, before I get started, associate, she is, has been promoted to senior planner, and
Oh, I'm just reading this.
Yeah, it wasn't updated on the staff report just recently, but wanted to recognize the good work that Sarah's done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay.
So this evening, I am before you to adopt off-street parking regulation MTMC 1912520D. This code was inadvertently repealed in June through ordinance 2864, but was originally adopted February of last year. This code states, "For private recreation facilities and RS zones, parking shall be located on the same lot as buildings or facilities it will serve. Parking on public streets shall not be counted toward parking requirements." And so this code has gone to Planning Commission. When it was originally up for adoption, they had a public hearing, they unanimously recommended approval, and then city council had a public hearing and unanimously adopted, voted to adopt this regulation. So it was only repealed as an error, and so staff is recommending that city council adopt this ordinance to re-adopt MTMC 1912520D, and this can be accomplished following the public hearing today.
All right, thank you. Go. Open the public hearing. Questions before we do that? Anybody? I don't see any. So, go ahead, Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing is now open. Have anyone signed up for this?
No one signed up in person or online, and there was no written testimony.
All right, thank you. Okay, so does anyone have any questions? Um, Mayor for Tim Wall.
I was ready to
Okay.
Close the public hearing if
I guess we didn't have any questions earlier, so we don't have any questions now, so Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing is now closed. And now, are there any more discussions before we go for the vote? Hey, Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to uh, approve the ordinance to re-adopt MTMC 19125020D as provided.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Next is the review and vote on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations. And that is with our, uh, with Jeff Betts, our Recreation and Parks Director.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro-Tama Councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. And as mentioned, tonight's agenda item is to review the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for allocation of the 2025 Hotel Motel Tax Funds. So this is the second review tonight. And the city has allocated lodging tax funds, as you know, for many years, uh, utilizing the one hotel that's in Mount Lake Terrace, and that's the Studio Six located in the Gateway Neighborhood. The city allocated $50,000 annually in the 25 and 26 budget. This was proposed by staff for this budget cycle, really because the annual collection amount has far exceeded what it used to be, more around $25,000. And the last few years, it's been exceeding $50,000. So with that amount, it's built up a little bit of an ending fund balance in addition to a couple of COVID years where no events happened. And so Tour de Terrace didn't happen for two years, so they didn't take their funding amount in in those years of of COVID itself, but so with that, um, the current ending fund balance, the Hotel Motel Tax Fund is approximately $243,000. And that's before this year's allocation. So based on that council-approved budget amount, two applications were received by that December 19th deadline. Then although only two of those were received, we did field quite a few calls and had a lot of discussions with very interested um, applicants who wanted to know more about the process and really didn't understand what it was, they just saw funding available, so I think it's going to take a little bit of work to continue to do some outreach to the community on what these funds are and what you can do with them. So the 2025 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee was appointed by council this past November and January. And per state law, that committee is comprised of two representatives of businesses that are required to collect that hotel motel tax, two people who are involved in the activities that are authorized to be funded by the tax, and then one elected official who serves as the chairperson of the committee. So this year's committee members, as chosen by council, are Councilmember Laura Sonmore, the chairperson, who is the City Council representative, Travis Romine, and David Cavesos, who are the area general manager and chief operating officer of Ikeon Hospital Hospitality, or Studio Six, uh, Bonnie Mercer from Friends of the Arts, and Dale Newman from the Now Schreiners. So lodging tax funds can be used, in summary, for tourism marketing, marketing and operations of special events and festivals, operations of tourism-related facilities owned or operated by nonprofit organizations. And then additionally, you can use, utilize it for operations and capital expenditures of tourism-related facilities owned by municipalities or public facility districts. So this year's two applicants were Friends of the Arts or the Arts of the Terrace event, which is in its 45th year, and has an estimated attendance around 2,700 people. They requested $15,000, and these funds were for advertising, printing, the artist preview party, as well as some equipment investment. The second application was from the Chamber of Commerce for the Mount Lake Terrace Dog Festival, which is a new event. And with new events come startup funds and infrastructure and things like that that may be necessary. So they requested $35,000 for an estimated 8,000 person attendance for this new event, utilizing marketing, community involvement, uh, infrastructure such as equipment rentals and some temporary infrastructure as well for that event. So criteria, uh, along with required by state law, the criteria would be for the committee's recommendation would be whether the applicant submitted a complete application in a timely manner, whether the use was a permitted use of lodging tax funds, and whether those proposed expenditures increase overnight visits, including off-season visits, or create a positive economic impact. They also needed to demonstrate a need for the funding and also to say whether they've applied for other grant funding from other agencies. So in addition to that, state auditors have recommended that lodging tax funds be used for programs, events that reach an audience beyond Mount Lake Terrace that generates overnight stays in the city, since those funds are generated by overnight stays. The city's application of the state's reporting measures require that an estimated visitors traveling 50 miles or more to the event. So based on this, the LTAC recommendation was that the committee believes that both applicants meet that criteria to generate overnight stays and to create an economic or other community benefit. So in turn, LTAC recommends that the Friends of the Arts be allocated $10,000 of the $15,000 they requested. The Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce be allocated $20,000 of the $35,000 requested for a total amount allocated of $30,000. So that does leave $20,000 unspent of the budgeted 50. So for council action, it's a little different with LTAC than um, than most other items. But under state law, the city council can award only the LTAC recommended amounts to all some or none of the applicants on the LTAC list. Can't adjust the funding amounts uh, without resubmitting their request to LTAC. If council does desire to allocate funds for any entity not on the list or change recommended amounts, they must submit that request to LTAC for further recommendation. And uh, as I had mentioned before, and the community is well aware that Tour de Terrace announced the end of their event, uh, beginning of this year. And a new nonprofit group has emerged, wanting to put together a lot of the different pieces of that summer event. And uh, based on that, I mentioned at the last meeting that staff recommended that we reopen another window for special summer event type things that people would like to apply for. So um, based on that, uh, last meeting, and council wishes what appeared would be a new two-week window would be opened soon to allow additional proposals for that remaining $20,000 budget. And then after that, LTAC would meet and review any applications received. And then that would come back to council, that recommendation after 45 days. So the staff recommendation for tonight is that uh, council moves to vote on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for lodging tax funding. And then additionally authorize the city manager to execute a tourism promotion agreement with both Friends of the Arts and Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce for those aforementioned programs and events for this year, the year 2025. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Comments? Hey? What I I'll just go ahead and um, Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for lodging tax funding and authorize the city manager to execute the tourism promotion agreement with Friends of the Arts and Mount Lake Terrace Chamber for the programs and events uh, for year 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. You want discussion? Okay. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, usually during this time when we're with uh, lodging tax, um, I was a board member of Tour de Terrace, and I recused myself. Tour de Terrace does not exist anymore. And then looking at Friend of the Arts, Friends of the Arts, I am a liaison to the Arts Commission, which is the city's board. I am not a member of Friends of the Arts. Friends of the Arts is a separate entity, and it's a nonprofit organization. I have nothing to do with it. So I just want to uh, state all that before we continue. Thank you.
So he can vote on this, yeah? Okay. Is that our attorney there? It's okay. All right, thank you. All right, Mayor for Tim Wall. Oh, we already did that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to reopen the uh, LTAC process uh, for another opportunity for a summer event.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to reopen this. All in favor?
Aye.
For discussion? Oh, we can
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion?
Was there any discussion before? All right, all in favor, again.
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess we just uh, have you reopen it. We give you permission.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So then we're on to the next one, again with Jeff Betts, which is the review and vote on the agreement with A&W Flooring for pool liner replacements.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Again.
Good evening again. So as I mentioned, this is a review and vote on a contract with A&W Flooring. And this is to replace, excuse me, replace a portion of the Recreation Pavilion's pool liner. And directly, it's the river area of the pool. If you're familiar, it's the south end, closest to that south patio area. So just a little bit of background information on that project and the pool itself. Uh, the pool was first renovated in 2003, so originally when it was built, it was a forward thrust style box pool with a diving board. And so, and 2003, uh, reimagining of that, of the pool area and the activity areas um, was undertaken by the city. And so that created different distinct areas of the pool, which includes a leisure pool, a main pool area that's uh, more of a square for lap swimming and things like that, swim lessons in the middle. Has a, a floor that kind of gets deeper and deeper as you go down towards the deep area, the deep tank that's in the middle. And then there's a teaching pool on the south end, as well as a lazy river. And so that lazy river has a current that propels you around. And so that area of the pool is what we're talking about specifically um, replacing the liner and the materials associated with that. So there has been numerous uh, interventions, is what we call them, uh, with the pool liner itself. In 2008, we did some warranty work that uh, it was completed to re-line the vertical walls and panels in the main pool area. And then we tried another technique with the similar issue we were having with the delaminating. And we installed small one-by-one-inch glass tiles in, uh, instead of painting the lane lines. And so that's what we currently have, and those are the the two main um, interventions that we've done. There was one a few years ago, also where we tried repairing some issues in the river. And so that's kind of what we're seeing now is continuation of that. We've never replaced that liner, though. So uh, in the river area itself, along the steps, the seams are coming apart. All the seams work, that needs to be done on those curves. And then there is a, a main seam as well that goes down the center of it that has started to separate and water is starting to get under there and create a potentially will create bubbling and water loss. And if that continues, it could potentially cause issues with foundations with water. Which is why we, we noticed the problem and budgeted it. Um, we tried pushing it to 26, but it has gotten worse and worse, which is why we are here and trying to get this done this year instead. So this project would be to remove the existing liner, tiles, and PVC caps and rails in the river area. That liner uh, runs up the vertical walls to tiles. But those tiles, they don't make anymore in that size and style. And uh, they have to remove those tiles to make sure that they uh, that they're able to adhere the liner to the PVC walls. So they have to replace all those tiles as well, which increased the cost quite a bit. It's very labor-intensive to do that. So um, that's the main scope of the work, just replacing the liner and uh, the associated equipment with that. So if we did delay, the, the issue would be um, definitely that the water gets in the liner and causes that bubble. It's already a bit of a trip hazard, it's becoming one uh, to where it's, it's uh, probably about a half-inch rise in the pool, in the river itself when you walk. So the, the contractor is called A&W. They're, they're a certified installer for this project. They're operating out of Florida. It is a sole source because they are, they're certified installer, and they don't allow anybody else to install their materials. We also can't have other pool materials installed when we have um, a different liner material competing with a a different type of install. There's many different kinds of liners, there's different kinds of um, different ways to do the interior of a pool, but we need to make sure that we utilize the same materials to make sure that um, everything is working together. So we plan the work to occur May 12th through June 23rd. So that's about a six-week job, but there's additional time on the front end and the back end. The front end, we would need to close a little bit earlier to make sure we could drain the pool, and there's just one drain in the pool. So we can't just drain the river, unfortunately. So um, in addition, once we're done with the job, it takes about a week to refill and reheat the water, and it still won't be as warm as it is now. Takes quite a bit of time to get the, the heat back up. But we do really set that date so we could be refilled and running by the time summer rolls around, which is our busiest season. As mentioned, the project was already in the 2526 Capital Improvement Fund for $200,000. So that was a quote that we received about two and a half years ago when we're working on this budget. We got an update for it last year. Um, but there's been a little bit of escalation. So this uh, 2026 budget item, we'd be recommending to move it to this year, so that would be a budget amendment involved with that and changing years. But um, really just as I mentioned, it's been failing at a little more rapid pace than we anticipated, which is why we're recommending moving it up. There is uh, two different pieces to this. As outlined in the staff report, there's the materials portion, which is coming from Italy. So it is uh, a little more time-sensitive to make sure we order that material. Um, that is within the city manager's budget authority, so we have issued a PO already for that amount. It's $55,274.31. But the installation costs exceeds that installation with tax and performance and payment bonds is about $165,000. So the total project amount, um, and for project authorization is $230,000. But that includes a contingency of $9,693.94. And that is primarily for any surprises that pop up while we are cutting into things. And I anticipated if it's more materials that are necessary, there's other tiles they need, or whatever it is that comes up in the middle of a project, so we wouldn't have to get new authorization for that. So that is the end of my report. Uh, the staff recommendation for this would be that the city council authorize the city manager to sign that attached contract. It's one of our small public work contracts with A&W Flooring. And that would be for tonight, a review and vote for tonight. Any questions?
Do you have any questions before? Did you have your hand up first? I can't look both ways at once. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you coming and appreciate us trying to find solutions to continue to keep our pool in service and viable. Um, I guess just a couple of questions, because I mean, I will name, like, it's hard to invest significant amount of money into, you know, a facility that we are actively planning for, you know, kind of its end of life, right? And trying to figure out what's, what's next for us. And so I guess just in terms of like, thinking about that, like And so I guess just in terms of like thinking about that, like, I wouldn't necessarily install wood floors in my house if I was going to tear it down in five years. Like, I guess I'm particularly curious about the tile, because it sounds like, you know, that's something that was a decision that was made at the time and it looks lovely. And I guess it, like, I'm curious if that was a solution that needed to be, that needs to be part of, I guess, the, the current state, given that we know that this is probably not a long-term investment in terms of the use of the lazy river as it stands currently.
So the, the tile for the lazy river is on the vertical wall.
Aye.
And it's, as you can see, that mostly it's that part between, the divider between the deep end of the pool and the lazy river, there's tile all the way around that and down the vertical wall, and then it goes horizontal up there.
Okay.
That's the tile that we need to replace because they have to rip it all out to get this, because the liner itself goes all the way up the wall and then they have to torch it on. So they can't replace those tiles, they can't remove them without breaking them. So there's that piece of it. One of the previous remodels that we did, I mentioned putting one by one inch glass tiles. That was in the middle of the pool where the lane lines are.
Okay.
And so two different jobs and we're not, we actually are replacing some of those. Staff will be gluing some of those while the pools drain because we've, quite a few of those lane line tiles are broke as well. So we're taking the opportunity to try to do as much maintenance as we can. And so there's, we also, there's a lot of other projects that we're doing that we're putting together a list that, you know, I'd be more than happy to send around to council too, if you want to see all the stuff we're doing.
I mean, I think that's always good for, yeah, us to be able to convey to the public because I will say long closures are tough, right? I know we hear about it when, when the pool is out of service for a week. So, you know, for it to be out of service for six weeks, I think being able to convey what's going on and the positive benefits of that is probably great. And I appreciate the thoughtful way that you guys do make the most of those closures to try to do all of the projects. I guess just to make sure that I understand, so we aren't installing new areas of tile to replace what's, like, I guess that's, I'm trying to understand, so with the new liner that's being put in, are we then putting in new tile that is both expensive and like painstaking to install as part of the installation of the new liner? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, there, it's, the new tile's going where the existing tile is. It's just we can't replace that existing tile with like for like.
Right.
And so to remove it, you're going to break it. It's like if you're redoing the tile in your bathroom, it's very hard to remove tile without breaking it because of the way that it's installed. But, so it's, it's literally really just replacing existing tile with, with new. And that's, it's, it's really unavoidable.
Okay.
Part of the project, but it does make it more expensive. And, you know, really, it's just because they have to tuck that liner up and inside that tile, the tile goes over the top of it.
Got it. Okay, so there's not an alternative?
No.
Okay. That's what I wanted to understand. Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the explanation. Thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else? All right. Mayor Protemwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize the city manager to sign the attached contract with A&W Flooring to replace the pool liner issue.
All right.
Second.
Okay. This has been moved and seconded. We don't need any discussion. So, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Murray's question about the tile, and I think you answered it only what you can. There's no alternatives, so let me make sure I phrase it the way I do, man, explain it in my head, which is, what you're saying is there is nothing else we can possibly do, meaning that we are in tile now. I understand we're going to displace it, but I'm just going to be clear, if this is a matter of aesthetics, I don't need that, right? Just one, that's what I'm hearing. It's not about aesthetics, this is the only way this is going to work. There's no other options. And so don't come with, what about? There is no what about. We've done that.
That's correct. It'd be exposed PVC. It's not...
Which then is a safety issue, not a...
Right. It would be a safety issue probably against health code in general state. There's like WAC requirements that we have to follow for pool installation and maintenance and operations.
Perfect. And again, I want to go on record, your question was absolutely clear. My brain is just not working the way it should. And so you did answer it, that's what I heard. Just wanted to click it in my way. Thank you.
Okay, so now we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the review and vote on the account, agreement with Baker Tilly for long-range financial planning and financial sustainability planning with our deputy city manager, Carolyn Hope.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. Here to review this contract proposal with you again. Just to give you a little more and different information than last week, I wanted to just share that the purpose of this contract is to hire a consultant to support the city council, staff, and community in evaluating options to close a gap between our revenues and expenditures. The consultant's work includes meeting with the city council during your retreat to kick off the project and understand your goals and discuss the process they proposed, make sure that you're comfortable with it. And then they will perform a review of the unfunded and underfunded programs and projects that the city has so that they can understand the needs as well as reviewing our financial forecast. Then they'll create a financial model to bring back to you where you have opportunities to make some decision points, moving levers, if you want to say, in the model so that you can understand where there's, there's room to make decisions. When you're comfortable with that model, it will be brought to the task force. And again, the task force are community members that will learn about the budget, learn about these options that you will be evaluating. And then they'll study that pretty thoroughly and make some recommendations to you. And again, the goal of creating the task force is to build an informed community, to be transparent and accountable, and to build an understanding in the community about your ultimate decision. And the consultant is really important to us because consultants work across many cities across the country. They build expertise, they can see what's worked and what hasn't worked and bring that expertise to us. And also they provide additional support. And as you may know, we're down three staff and finance right now and we're closing the books on three years' worth of information. And so we have a hefty workload right now. So it's not that we don't have the expertise, but we definitely could use the help in this regard. And also the consultant can provide a third-party sort of neutral evaluation that's helpful for all of us, for you, for staff, and for the community. So that's what this contract is about and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
All right, are we ready, questions?
Yes. Is our professional service agreement what you're going to approve that you have in there?
Yes.
Because on page 52, you still have Stefan's name in there. And that he has not been an employee for about three years.
We would, we can make that change. This has not been signed. On page 52?
Yes, so I'd be voting no on that. Professional service, professional service agreement, amendment A, page 52. And my other, I want to point out is if we're down staff, we still know that we put in our job description that the budget management, developing and managing the city's annual budget, including capital improvement plans, ensuring fiscal responsibility and accountability. So we already know that we have to do that. And if we want to be transparent to our citizens, what have we been doing for the last two, five, 10, 20 years? We have been not transparent with them. Somebody once told me, if it's too good to be true, fire beware. So why isn't every city doing this? Because they have to already do it as part of their job. And again, I'll just go back to saying, I don't need someone to come in and take my watch and then tell me what time it is for $100,000. And the climate right now, I just even heard on the way over that in the federal government, they're firing people on looking at infrastructure. So if we already know that the federal government may not be funding certain projects, we also know that our budget is going bad, why aren't we looking at something now? I know when my budget is bad and I know that I need to keep food on the table and pay my rent, I cut ahead of time to make sure that I can afford things in the future to keep me afloat. The project also said that they would project revenue and expenses. How can they do that when we're not sure what the federal government's doing and we're not sure what we're going to be doing on things? We already know our budget is going bad. And it said at least three potential expenditure reductions, only three is something they would put in the outcome, and at least three potential revenue increases. I can tell you right now, if one of those revenue increases is to increase our citizens' property taxes from the normal 1% that we've always done to 2% to 3%, I can already tell you, I'm voting no on that. Our citizens are suffering enough and we need to make sure that we are giving them the services that a city should do. And there are a certain amount of funds that go to a certain amount of things, so our budget is really tied. And I'm just surprised we're spending $100,000 on something that we should be doing. And the first thing I would be doing is going to my department directors and telling me, what can you cut? What are you looking at? What can we go without because we know in the future, and I've been through it before, is the department directors get together and they start telling us what people they do not need. And I can tell you, it is a horrible experience, having to lay off people from the city and then telling our citizens, Lori, we can't fix your potholes because we don't have anybody to do it. There's something to be looked at with this budget. It just, I, I just am really surprised that I'm the only one crying wolf right now and nobody else is concerned about the budget. There's a lot of gravity that needs to be put into this and a lot of thought. And our citizens need to know that their water rates are going to be going up, their garbage rates are going to be going up. There's a lot of different things that are coming on to us and we're going to fill it too. So again, I'd like to go on with a lot of my comments, but they fell on deaf ears last time, so I'll end it there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's, unless there's any further questions, I want to put a motion on the table at least for discussion. So thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with Baker Tilly for $99,500 for the long-range financial sustainability task force and plan.
Second. Okay, so now we're going to be in discussion if there's any. There's, go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, just clarification, that Baker Tilly is going to be taken on to take a look at what we can do to help us in the future with our budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you much.
I'll first question. Anyone else? Mayor Protemwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I actually find it interesting, others should find it interesting, because I agree with Councilmember Sonmore about the budget crisis. And I generally consider her my closest ally on budget issues. And so it's interesting, I find it interesting at least, that I, while I agree with her on the challenges that we face that are ahead of us, it's a dire consequences in a few years if we don't address this challenge now. I guess we, we would disagree on the approach of how we get there. And I, I believe this is absolutely necessary. I appreciate the concern about spending $100,000 because, because of the budget crisis. But as we've done with our comprehensive plan update, as we've done with our civic campus update, as we've done with our, you know, countless other town center updates, you know, countless other significant projects for the city, this is one of those significant projects that we need to get our arms around and address it head on. And that's why we need to bring in some expertise to be able to help work with us to do it. And I, I don't know if others had a chance to look at the other submittals from other companies, but I did go through each one and, and I, and I really liked the scope of work that a lot of them offered, but I did agree that Baker Tilly was absolutely the best one, the best one that was chosen for a variety of reasons. One is they are, they have worked with us. They are familiar with our budget. They're not going to take any, need any ramp up time to get their, their head around what we're doing. They've been working with us. They've also done this type of work and come up with some great results from other communities around this area. And finally, most importantly, while they all offered a variety of different ways of how to go about this process, the only one that addressed cost reductions was Baker Tilly. And cost reductions, I agree with Councilmember Sonmore, is absolutely going to be critical for us to address because I also agree that our, our residents are going to, are already cash strapped and already facing challenges and can't afford much more. Yet we're going to be asking them to, for more for various things like water and sewer, stormwater, we already adopted. There, there are challenges that we, we face and we need to get, work together to be able to find solutions. And I believe this is the best approach to doing so, so I will be voting yes.
Are we ready to vote?
Can I just answer back? Let's use my name. I'd like to know what we've been doing in the past to do our budget, and this is the first time we've ever done anything like this. And why aren't other cities doing it? It's only three cities in Washington State that I saw. And one was the city of Kenmore and their city manager just left. And one was, there was two others, I'd have to go and look at the names, Mamishin, there was one other one. But our budgets are a little bit different state to state. I know they have CPAs on there, but it's going to be really interesting when a citizen comes in, because I was asking a friend if she wanted to be on it. And she goes, yeah, we need a pool and we need a grocery store. And that's all she cared about. I want a grocery store. Well, guess what? Grocery store doesn't have anything to do with our budget. The pool, we don't have to have that. In fact, we lose money on the pool, but it's wonderful to have, well, I want this. Well, where does that fit in the budget and what are you going to cut out? So there's going to have to be a lot of education. I think it's only four months. How many meetings is it all together?
There's room to negotiate some of the details of the task force. I think they proposed four to six. I'd have to go back and look at the scope. There's room to discuss the size of the group and the frequency of their meetings.
We discussed that last year and you specifically said you wanted to keep it small. And I believe it was no more than eight. And then we'd invite citizens in. So I'm looking at four to six meetings and maybe, I don't know, let's say 70 people are in the room, which I doubt people will come, hopefully they will, and divide that by a certain amount of money. It's just going to be interesting what our return of investment is because we already know that we're going to have to cut costs. I mean, that's the bottom line. We already know that. We've already, you guys have already told us that, that we're going to have to cut costs. So it's going to be interesting to see what it brings. I, I'm, I know that everyone's going to be voting for it. I, I hope it goes really well, but I will not be voting for this and I will never be voting for one in the future. We have to have the staff here that knows how to do that. It's in contracts. It says that they need to do this. So it's surprising to me.
Anyone else? Mayor Protemwell? We already did. So, going to call for a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's five to one. All right. Thank you very much.
You all just voted on a contract that had the wrong employee's name in it?
That can be considered a Scrivener's error and we can correct that.
The contract on page 10, the contract on page 10 has Jeff's name on it. The contract on page 50, the page 52 was an example of a contract that was attached to the request for proposals.
Yeah, I, I would agree that that's a Scrivener's error that can be changed later. Typically, you're authorizing city to enter the contract and those types of details can be, can be changed.
Thank you.
Bob, what other details can be changed after the contract? Are you just saying before the contract? Because we just heard that we're going to negotiate with meetings and different things. So what other things can be changed in the contract?
Well, I mean, she made you aware of it before you voted on it, so you... Well, I mean, she made you aware of it before you voted on it, so you were aware that that change was going to be made. So when you authorized the vote for the contract, that's what you authorized, is that it could be given the correct name. It's not as if the contract that is presented to you is locked in stone once it's in the agenda. It can be changed with the authority of the council if you give such permission. And in this case, I would say it implied that you did.
So what I heard is that we're going to be negotiating then, instead of having four to six meetings, we're negotiating on having more meetings? And then I didn't hear any other changes.
Well, it depends what you've authorized. What did the motion say that was just adopted? Could the clerk read back the motion? Or perhaps you don't have a clerk taking minutes?
Yeah, we have it, we have it right here. We don't want to put Jennifer on the spot, but we have it.
But it depends on the language of the motion.
Yeah, the motion was, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Baker Tilly for $99,500 for the long-range financial sustainability task force and plan.
That's a fairly broad motion and authorization, so they definitely have authority to negotiate those types of details. You did not lock in any particular, specific details like the ones that were discussed in your exchange versus the number of members.
Is that with any kind of contract? Because now it can come back to us, because that's the only contract I looked at.
Well, I think you would get to look at it again before it's signed. No, that's not how you do it, you've authorized. But yeah, it's not then. You've put your trust in your staff, in your administrators. You've looked at it, and you've given them authorization to go in and sign a contract that is, you know, similar to what you've just.
So in any kind of contract that has that loose wording like that, the council should be able to see those contracts again on everything we vote on? Because that's a little scary now that I think that things can be changed after a council votes on something, and we see the contract, and we give such a general statement. And I know we do that on things above $40,000, and we've seen that before, but that means that we could end up with something totally different than what we saw?
I don't think you get in with something totally different, but again, you've given your staff permission to enter a contract, and I don't think I have anything else to really add.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are we moving on to number 11? The review and vote on agreement with Feldman and Lee for Public Defense.
I didn't get up to move over there, I apologize. So this contract with Feldman and Lee for Public Defense Services is for a six-month period, and that is primarily to remove the ambiguity around the Washington State Supreme Court's standards, public defense caseload standards. We currently have a contract with Feldman and Lee for Public Defense for $18,000 per month, and that contract does not expire until the end of this year. However, they have requested to renegotiate, given the increasing costs and increasing caseloads for Mount Lake Terrace. And I can't speak for their other clients, but I would assume they're approaching most every city they work with, for a six-month term that would cost $26,500 per month. And with that, I think we've done a significant amount of research for other cities that have released requests for proposals or RFPs over the last year, a little bit less, including Edmonds, Bothell, and Shoreline. All of those RFPs have resulted in either zero responses or one response from their current public defense firm. I think the environment with the Supreme Court case standards, and nobody knows what's going to happen with that until the Supreme Court makes a decision, has contributed quite a bit to that, to the lack of response or the lack of interest to these RFPs. With that, we would recommend going ahead with the contract with the understanding that we will issue an RFP following the state Supreme Court's decision on the caseload standards. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mayor, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city manager. A couple of questions, I guess I just want to make sure that I have clarity and we're all on the same page. So we have a current contract that isn't up until the end of the year. They're proposing a new contract midway through that's an increase of 47% or the annual equivalent of $189,500. And the proposal before us is that we not go to market and at least see what else is out there. I guess I do want clarification on the caseloads, though, because my understanding is we are still within the current contract in terms of our caseload and recognize that there is increasing costs. And again, this for me is not about, you know, the work that they are doing, or the cost of that work, or, you know, wanting to continue a relationship with them, but it is, you know, looking out and doing due diligence for our community and recognizing that if every time, you know, costs increase with somebody that we have contracted services with, that they feel like they can come back to us and say, well, like, I know we have a contract, but like, we want more money. You know, it feels like at a bare minimum, like, it is incumbent on us, from my perspective, to do our due diligence and see what else is out there. It may be nothing. It sounds like it probably, it is very likely either just our current provider, you know, or none. But I have to be able to explain that to our community. And I feel like if I'm going to approve something at that rate, particularly at a time where we know we have budget challenges, I would like to know that there's no other options on the table. So I appreciate all of the due diligence, still can't support what is before us, but I appreciate all of staff's efforts to try to ensure that I had clarity about kind of what the current situation was, and that we are all at least, you know, working with a full understanding of what the proposal is before us. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Sonmore.
I would like to state, that's exactly why we need our city staff to work on our budget, because of the vast experience with this firm. And I know they would tell you, even if you talk to another city, we're not going to get anything less than this. And that comes from experience, that comes from working with that firm for many years. And you just said, we have a contract, but we want more money. That's what we just talked about in the last one that we just voted on. We do have a contract, but they want more money. And this is where it comes from experience, understanding about this firm and going out there and understanding the nature of what's going on with these firms. We have to have an attorney. There's no ifs, ands, and buts. If we go out to RFP, we risk the chance of having everything go up even higher. So that's why it's so important to have people on staff who know these things.
Anyone else? Mayor Protam Wall.
I guess I'll make my comment now rather than wait until we have a motion on the table. But it kills me that I have to support this, because it's insane to me that, I mean, first of all, it is a constitutional right and our responsibility to provide indigent defense. We have to do it. I don't understand why it costs us twice as much, nearly twice as much, to defend the same person we're prosecuting. I just don't understand the economics. I guess maybe economics is exactly what it is, supply and demand. I don't know what the reasoning is behind why it costs us that much. And it gets back to what I've been saying, is I think we need to spend some time really delving into this public safety and criminal justice crisis that we have. Because our police, as I mentioned previously, our police do such a great job of protecting our community, but the criminal justice system is failing us. And we need all the pieces, if we want true public safety, we need all the pieces to be working properly and correctly and together. And that includes our law enforcement, that includes proactive diversion efforts and services and ways to help people stay away from crime. But when there is a crime, there needs to be accountability. And that part of the system is failing us right now. We need to do better with the services and being proactive. But this is the area that I am so concerned about and just don't understand why public defense costs, again, twice as much to prosecute the same person that are in the system. Anyway, I also agree with Councilmember Murray that we have a contract in place, and we should be able to rely on that contract through the end of the contract. But they are threatening to use their clause to escape and get out if we don't increase the costs. And my concern gets back to what Councilmember Sonmore has pointed out, which is if we do an RFP and there is no other firm that applies other than one we have, they can increase in their submittal more than what they're asking for now. And we'd be stuck with that higher amount. And I don't want to be stuck with that higher amount, because I already think it's too much. So I'm painstakingly having to vote yes in favor of this, which I will, with everybody's permission, put on the table for a vote.
Did you have more to add?
Yes, I do. So this is, what you just said is my argument with housing. I would like to do this, I'd like to do that, and you guys told me to stay in my lane and figure out what we can do here. So I hear you. I want to let you know, I hear what you're saying, and I completely agree with what you're saying. And this is another reason why we need in-house budgets, and there should be manuals and lessons learned kept in finance, is we went through this years ago. There were people we were paying for their legal costs who could actually afford it. And we had to go back out and collect those funds from the people who afford it. So that should be in our finance policy that we have, that our staff knows about, is we have a certain policy, if we know they can pay, they have to pay, and it doesn't come out of our funds. And so that's another reason to have manuals and rules about budgets, because other cities are paying above the cost too for people who can actually afford it. But I agree with you. What you're talking about is, unfortunately, it's a bigger issue that grows tentacles just like housing does. And it's something that, one of those things that, if we didn't have to pay, we could use it for what? You know, we'd have to think about where the funds come from and where they go, but this is something that we have to pay. But our only control, and you mentioned control, is we would have guidelines on looking at what we've done in the past with having to pay for people that could actually afford it. And so there's other things that are in-house that have to be kept there, because when we bring in somebody else to look at their budget, they're not going to know that history unless we have people who know our history within our city.
Anyone else? Mayor Protam Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I very grudgingly move to approve the second contract amendment.
Second.
So it's a moved and seconded? We've already discussed this? So call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Is that a five to one? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the city manager's report. Nope, we have one more? Oh. That's what I, oh, I already crossed that off. Sorry about that. Review and vote on the agreement with Tesadori?
Yes.
Or hearing examiner? That's Rico Tesadori, right?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council. The agreement before you tonight is for Mr. Rico Tesendori. He has provided hearings examiner services for our code compliance program for the last three years, I believe, and would like to continue that relationship. The current contract expired at the end of December of 2024. There was a delay in renewing it, only because I was named as a potential witness in a code enforcement case. So he couldn't negotiate with me to get that done, but he has not provided services that are not under contract. And I bring it up for you now because that case has concluded. And we have an agreement, actually, that will run through December 31 of 2027. The expected amount to be spent is estimated, because it's a case-by-case basis, and it depends on when he's called to provide his services in a code compliance case. And as you know, our code compliance team has been very focused on addressing the issues so that the activity in that division of community and economic development has picked up relatively significantly. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Comments? Okay. So Mayor Protam Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize city manager to sign the attached amendment to the professional services agreement with Tesadori.
Second. It's a moved and seconded. We don't have any more discussions, so I'm going to go for a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we're to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council. A couple of things to mention. First, community academy meeting is next Wednesday, so we're looking forward to that. We will be talking about the city manager's office and all of the wonderful work that my group here does for the city and how we strive to keep the community's goals in mind and advance council priorities. We have had 14 applications for the Terrace Summer Nights Program for musical artists. Got a great selection of people and musical groups to pick from, and I think we're going to have great events over the summer. So that's a good thing. And our team with both parks and public works have been designing or developing a request for proposal for our asset management system that we've talked about, for making sure we know when to replace things. It will definitely pay dividends down the line for water and sewer and stormwater funds along with our parks. They've developed a desired future condition, which is, what does our ideal look like? And how are we going to make sure it gets there? So we'll be getting that out the door relatively soon. We're looking pretty extensively at the World Cup, because that is a big opportunity for us, and we've identified a couple of opportunities that may be unique to us, that we're going to pursue pretty heavily. One of those, there's a match July 1, there's a match July 8, and there's nothing on the 3rd of July. So we're going to invite people that are here for those matches to come up and visit us and spend some time in the community. And PD, the police department roof and HVAC is almost complete, the design is almost complete, so we'll get started on that work here relatively soon. Lastly, everybody with a city IT login, which includes many of the council members, received notification for cybersecurity training, know before. And if you're able to complete that, that would be terrific, and that would help out Gary with his statistics quite a bit. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sonmore.
How many people signed up for the city academy?
32, I believe.
And is there any expectations how city council members can attend?
City council members are welcome to any of those. I would ask that you let me know, so we make sure we don't have a quorum for those meetings, or if we do, we can notice it. or if we do, we can notice it, make sure the public is aware.
And how many people have turned in applications to, for city council?
Four at the last count.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? House Member Woodard?
I appreciated the question about the community kickoff next Wednesday, so I'll just be clear, I will be there.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to move on. Okay, so next is the council liaison reports, and I'll start off with, House Member Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep my running commentary to 30 minutes. 11th, I would, nobody laughed at that because they know damn well I can do it. 11th, I had the opportunity to join Economic Alliance of Snohomish County on their Olympia Day, which was just awesome. I don't know how many people actually went, but it was definitely an eclectic group representing the county and it was just a great chance to meet with legislators. On the 13th, I joined a study session and on the 18th, I had my one-on-one with the city manager. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Councilmembers, Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I was also at our work session on the 13th. I was not able to make our monthly Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission meeting, but they held that last night and are working on their annual report. So excited to have them here in the very near future to share all of the good work that they're doing and then spent yesterday and today down in Olympia as part of the Association for Washington Cities Annual, both, you know, learning opportunity and advocacy opportunity for cities. And so we had a chance to both go to sessions where, you know, the ones I attended were focused on transportation and housing. We had lots on the budget, obviously, you know, the state is navigating significant budget challenges just as we are. And so, you know, it was interesting to hear their approach, which, you know, again is kind of like, everything's on the table, let's make sure we take a comprehensive look at what we're spending and how we're bringing in revenue and really think critically about how we best serve the residents that ultimately, you know, live in our community and across the state. So appreciated hearing from those folks and them taking time to meet and connect with us and then had a chance to meet with our representatives from the 32nd District. So our two representatives as well as our senator to advocate on behalf of our community and our focus particularly for this legislative session and budget cycle where we are trying really hard to advocate for funds to replace our library roof, which is not only an amazing resource for all of the things that libraries do, but also is a really important place in our community in terms of offering cooling and heating services when it gets really cold and really hot and especially when it gets really hot, given that we have so many folks without air conditioning in our community. So it was great to have those conversations and appreciate their work on our behalf. And I think that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. House Member Somer?
Yes, Councilman Ryan and I attended Left One and were curious to find out about the Senate bill for Left One funding, see what happened there. Also, on the same night, February 11th, I attended the Park and Rec meeting and we talked about Snohomish County Sports Commission presentation. They were wonderful and have asked for them to come speak here. They do the Hall of Fame, but they also are involved in, but they don't have anything in Mount Lake Terrace yet, so that's when we're talking about the World Cup and different things like that. They do dodgeball, Seattle Skating Club, which might help here, but perfect, I don't know what that one says, but they do a lot of sports facility, different activities. They'll tell you about it when they come here and they talk about how much money they pump into our economy. And you'll just love their presentation. So I won't go any more into that. And then we reviewed our 2025 work plan, the tree board update, and then our meeting was only about an hour, hour and 15 minutes. Sometimes it goes to two and a half hours because there's a lot of conversation in there. But I wanted to follow up on the hotel motel tax, just real quick. How come we took, or how much do we pay for tourism? Amy Spain used to be Tammy's boss, who was the committee I was just talking about. We used to pay it out of our hotel motel funding that we give out and we don't do that any longer. So I'm wondering what we pay now?
I don't have that number, but I can get it for you.
But we do still pay into tourism.
I don't know that answer, but I can get that, I can get it for you.
Amy Spain left in about 2019 and we miss having her come here because what she did for us is tried to get Mount Lake Terrace on their map because we were paying into it. So we wanted Mount Lake Terrace to be represented. So we don't have a lot of information on that anymore. And then since we go above and beyond council reports, I just want to put into the city council handbook, when a city, when a city council person leaves, I think the proper protocol would be after they leave, then we, we could announce it and put it out, but it shouldn't be at the same meeting when they're leaving. I think we should be very respectful and let them leave and make sure they get a proclamation. We talked about that last time when Doug left, that he was going to get a plaque or a proclamation. And I don't know if we ever followed up on that, but that's the kind of thing that I think we should add to our protocol and our city council handbook so we don't lose that for future people. It would be like the mayor leaves and she gets two minutes to say her piece and out the door she goes. And so I know a lot of people spend a lot of time on council and it would be nice to at least to have a proclamation when they leave and give them the courtesy to say their final piece or to have their family come in and then announce it. It's kind of like when you're walking out the door, oh, by the way, where's the replacement coming in? So that's just a pet peeve for me that we've talked about in years past is, you know, give that person the opportunity to leave gracefully. We have had people throw things when they leave and a couple other things have happened when people leave. There's been whole presentations on when people leave, but it would be nice to at least acknowledge that person with a proclamation. And that's all I have to report.
So next is Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I do remember a council member leaving and playing on his cassette player the entire Frank Sinatra. I did it my way. That was a really good one. Anyway, just a little reminiscing there. Okay, going in February, Tuesday, the 11th, I also attended the Left One Retirement Board. And then Tuesday 18th, I attended the Arts Commission and they're working on their work plan in preparation for the arts presentation to the city council when, on March 13th. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, on the 4th, had the Snohomish County, South County Cities, Mayor's Protem and Council President's meeting. On the 5th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Executive Committee meeting. On the 10th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Exploratory Committee. I was selected as a co-chair and I think I've expanded on that topic before about our Snohomish County Tomorrow, looking into how we might serve our cities and communities better throughout Snohomish County, doing more than just land use and planning, but recognizing that there are a lot of other serious challenges that our cities have to address and figuring out what is the best way to go about doing that. So that was the first meeting. We are continuing. I was honored to be helping lead this effort because I'm so passionate about this, what we're doing there and what potential there is for being able to look into and address so many challenges that we're facing. So I do look forward, if anybody has any input or ideas on what Snohomish County Tomorrow can be doing, I'd look forward to hearing from you and talking with you about your ideas and making sure that we are addressing those in the process. On the 12th, attended the Mount Lake Terrace, the Main Street Open House. I thought that was, first of all, just a great turnout and it was a great opportunity. You know, I think everybody here remembers the, the public hearing we had a year ago when the notices went out and the reaction that, that folks had and how frustrated they were about the, what their perceived lack of communication and unfortunately, it's part of the process, but this was the right way to do it. And this, the open house went very well. It was a great opportunity to address what we're doing, how we're doing it, and take the questions from the, from the residents and the business owners along the way. And, and I was just, I was very pleased with the, just in general, our community aleration. And by the way, our team members went door to door and that, that needs to be noted because that takes a lot of work and we appreciate the work that they did. And be sure, please pass that along to let them know how much we appreciate them going and making the effort to talk to our residents and our business owners personally about this, recognizing how, how many questions and how many concerns that they, they previously had. And I think we're doing our, our due diligence to make sure that we're appreciating where they're coming from and addressing their concerns and answering the questions. So great job to everybody and thank you for everybody that did turn out and attended the open house. On the 13th, also had the council work session. On the 14th, had the Snohomish County Cities Board meeting. There's another one that we're looking at, at how we can, so there's Snohomish County Tomorrow, where is, which is really addressing a lot of the policy side of things and then Snohomish County Cities. And, and we're exploring, you know, how do we fill the gap? What's not done, being done through Snohomish County Tomorrow? What can we be doing through Snohomish County Cities? Obviously, networking is a key issue, so we obviously are going to want to continue playing a role in how we can expand networking, but looking at other areas. So again, if you have ideas on how Snohomish County Cities should be playing a more active role in helping address the challenges that our cities are facing and working together as cities to address those challenges, please let me know. We're, again, working on ideas and tossing around opportunities that we might be able to explore and expand Snohomish County Cities. Then the last couple of days, also attended the City Action Days down in Olympia, had great sessions, networking and opportunities to meet with our list of delegation. I thought Councilmember Murray did a great job of explaining what's going on down there and, and it is, they are facing some significant challenges, but we appreciate being able to reach out and work with our delegation to address the challenges that we're facing here in Mount Lake Terrace and what they're doing to help us. I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so for my report, on the 7th of February, attended the Seashore Transportation Forum meeting and later that day, I met with our county council member Jared Mead. And then on the 10th, I did my civic duty and showed up for jury duty and was not needed. Thank you. And then I, we, we met with, on the 11th, I met with, it was the executive and mayor's meeting. And then on the 12th, I attended the open house here for Main Street and wow, what an attendance. So we're doing something right there. On the 15th, got up in the morning, on a Saturday morning at eight o'clock, we had a ribbon cutting at our new coffee house, Coke House. And there was a line of people waiting to get in for coffee. So they're very, very popular. And, and then yesterday and today, I attended the ADPC conference over in Lacey and Lash Olympia. I think we got a lot accomplished. So, and that's the end of my report. So now, next thing on our...
Sure. So I'm just reading an email that was sent by the city manager, kind of being appalled with my behavior at the last council meeting. And why didn't you come to me in, on a telephone call? Because we had our first meeting, our first monthly meeting that lasted 16 minutes a couple of days ago and you didn't bring up any of this to me. And I just feel kind of appalled by it because you think my behavior, I'm asking those questions that citizens expect, but you should see what I've seen in the past. So if you'd like to discuss this with me, albeit, I did not call for your resignation. I did not call for anything. So if council would like to talk to me about it, I'm sorry if I go out of my way to ask questions, to be a good council person and to ask these questions, but obviously you're very upset because you wouldn't have written an email like this if, I'm just really surprised that you put something out there like that.
Well, the next item was new business, so that was probably... All right, anyone else with new business? House Member Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have two and I'll consider the third based upon what I just heard. First one, I don't know who our new camera person is, but if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted you to focus on my lapel. Thank you, sir. Didn't get a chance to say hello to you. Tried to, I realize you, apologies. Nonetheless, for those who can't see that Smokey Bear, and this is a comment to all of my colleagues, current and former in the United States Forest Service. Many of them learn that they are no longer doing what we see here. I know for sure at least one lives in this community, so the new business would be, I'd be curious to see how many actual federal, working freedom fighters, dare call us, across the spectrum, live in this city and have learned that they no longer have employment and see whether or not there's a big enough concern there from the city's perspective to make a statement one way or the other. Just putting that out there. Personally hurt, to say the least, by all of this news that's been coming out. But again, as a former U.S. Forest Service person myself and a member of the League of Smokey Bear, if you will, I'm not going to not acknowledge that everything I've heard today matters, but we've talked about a lot of things and we've not talked about a lot of things, and this being one of them. The second one, a little more equally, if not more somber, you've heard a lot of activities that the council has done and I will just say, if you weren't paying attention to me for the last six years, you might have thought that was one of the shortest reports Dr. Woodard has ever done. That's because I didn't want to mischaracterize, but let's be clear, when I came back from Olympia, I came back with some form of sickness. And today was my first day really out of the house, let alone feeling human, which isn't about me, it's actually to pause and acknowledge that also today was acknowledged that 15, at least 15, because it's been a long day, but by this morning, 15 Snohomish County residents have passed from this virus, norovirus. And just acknowledging that families are out there hurting and that doesn't count for folks who felt like dying, which is my way of saying, I don't know what the heck I've had, but to say that the 11th was the last time I felt human until today is saying a lot. And I think I had a mild case because I did get my vaccinations, but it still came with an intensity I have not seen before and I don't know if that's dealing with the fact that we all really are still coming on the other side of an endemic. So we're catching things for the first time that we haven't really dealt with because we washed hands, because we social distanced, because we did X, Y, or Z. But just wanted to again acknowledge that there's a lot of pain out there that we did not discuss up here today. And so now I will actually share my third and I'm going to take a risk here because I really was hoping we'd get out of here before nine o'clock. And I will just say, in reference to the email that is now on blast, which, you know, everything we do, an email, you can ask for public records, so feel free to, but what I will say is, I actually appreciated the email for a lot of different reasons. It's got me listening different and I will use this as feedback today. When we were in the process of talking about, I believe it was number 10, yes, number 10, this financial stability, $100,000 spent, at one point, I absolutely heard, and we can, beauty of things being recorded and you can play it back, I absolutely heard, "I can't believe, I'm surprised, I'm the only one concerned about the budget." I believe that is a direct quote. And I realized, you know what? We're trying to get people to respond, we're trying to push people to speak up, whatever it is, but that felt very triggering in the sense of, so what, if I don't say something now, I don't care about the budget? And I realized, you know what, I'm 55 years old, I'm willing to let people mischaracterize however they want to, whatever. however they want to, whatever it is they think they're doing, but to me, that comment wasn't about any one person, it's about all of us. I know me being for the dramatic, as I'm doing right now, we cut corners to make our points, but what we need to realize is that those corners cut, still cut. And so I know myself, I'll be doing my best to pay attention to how I am presenting arguments, but we do, in my experience, take up spaces as though we're the only ones. And you, here's the beauty of it, you don't have to say you're the only one, although that did happen tonight. You can imply it just by how you're arguing. So I took that email as a, hey, be aware that while you're up here trying to make your points, there are folks it's landing on very differently, especially those who are learning the ropes or who are just trying to do the work that they think they are following our direction, right? Because the city manager takes their lead from us. I have yet to hear the city manager or anyone on that staff come up with anything that didn't align with what our goals are, but have there absolutely been surprises? That's usually how innovation works. There's gonna be surprises, but they stayed inside of our goals, our values, or whatever we expressed. I'm absolutely sure that this is not going to end here, but I'm also gonna let you know, I'm not gonna argue today. I made a comment when I was in Olympia the last time, and it was a joke, but it was very serious, which is, I do not argue when I think that I've had enough information to make a solid decision. And that's where I find myself right now, which is why I voted the way I did, to have the $100,000 spent to figure this out, because a different way to look at that same problem, why haven't we done it in the past? Is, well, perhaps if we did, we wouldn't be here. So why would I continue doing what we've done in the past if it got me here? So, just putting that out there, that we all have rhetorical tools to keep an argument going, but we voted, we made a decision, but yeah, I promise you, seven of us, although one of us resigned, deeply cared about this budget, and you can see that through the public record, through past experiences called meetings and minutes and recordings. I have absolutely said, please listen to the recordings, as much as I appreciate Rick here in the back, he can only cover so much. You can cover a whole lot just by watching our YouTube channel. So, again, appreciate everything I've heard, but at the same time, I also think that what was in that email needed to be said to all of us, that anybody took it individually is, you know, them to deal with, but from where I'm sitting, it was a conversation to all of us.
Anyone else for new business? Mayor Pro Tem Wal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, last week, we, we talked about LTAC and having a strategic meeting. I didn't want to expand on, expand on that actually, um, because what I really want is a more encompassing conversation about placemaking, and that was part of our comprehensive plan update and, and the economic strategy, uh, is, is making this the place to be, a place that people want to be. And LTAC, I think, is part of that. Um, and, and our community, and how we go about doing our community events and the opportunity to fund those events and how we do that. I think, we, Councilmember Salmore pointed out also tourism, um, so that can be part of that broader discussion on placemaking. Um, I think, and I've mentioned it in the past, I'd like to include a kind of strategic discussion on, on how we do, uh, the 1% for the arts. Um, I, I'd like to see it be more than just putting a painting on a wall somewhere in some public building that may, people may or may not see. I think there's, uh, public art is something we should be celebrating and, and with the entire community, and I think there's a way that we can, you know, we have some money being set aside to do that. I think there's an opportunity for how we can do it better and more publicly. Uh, so I'd like to have a conversation about that, so include that in kind of our strategic discussion. I think there's, um, other, other mechanisms we can be employing to make this the place to be. So I really enjoyed the opportunity to have a conversation with everybody about that and, uh, be able to talk about how we can, what kind of efforts we can be working together as a community to, uh, to make this the place we all want to be and hang out and enjoy and have families and, and at Sky Bar, somewhere, looking out with a 360-degree panoramic view of Mount Rainier and the Olympics and the Cascades and even Mount Baker up north. So I think there's opportunities to be had, and, and this is a place that we can be and celebrate and enjoy together, and, uh, I look forward to figuring out how we can make that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Ryan?
Just to piggyback on what Mayor Pro Tem said, um, I think if we could do a 1% for the arts, when we redo the water tower, I'd like to put an elevator there, and that could go to the top, uh, Jack Long Park, and you could have an observation tower there. Is that kind of like what you're speaking of?
Yep.
Okay, great. Let's look for it.
Yeah, right. And have a keg.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. I don't see any other hands going up. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. We adjourn. Thank you.